Afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass Journal Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So welcome, we are live and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone to rise and join me in splitting the flag.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Call roll, Commissioner Stady?
I am here, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
President.
Commissioner Shea, we have a full board today. Item number three, executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Sure, I'll make the motion. Make the motion, we go into executive session pursuant to purpose three, MGLC, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, Subsection A, Subsection Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares.
I'll second. The motion.
On the motion to go into executive session, roll call vote, Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Shea, well, she has, we are in executive session, I might mention that we will be returning to complete the remainder of the regular meeting agenda.
Chair so declares.
And I have so declared that we need an executive session. Thank you very much.
Still waiting for Scott to amend, so he's not here yet, but.
In a minute. We'll be on item number four, minutes of the last meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Back on, right?
Uh, yeah, we have, the recording started.
Right, but John.
You can continue, Commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you want.
I'm ready.
Meeting minutes of June twenty-one are fine, it'll be fine to me.
Yeah.
Move approval, that's present.
Second. On the open session minutes of June twenty-first, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Robert?
Robert Pearson?
Yeah.
Come on in, Robert.
There he is.
Hi, Robert.
Hello.
Robert, sit right there in the hot seat.
Okay, sir.
This is.
Good to see you all.
Same here.
A little update from Robert Pearson, our RSVP.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Robert.
Okay, well, just a couple of brief updates about what's happening now in the summer. First off, in your packet, in addition to the newsletter, you should see a letter uh, from the Norfolk County RSVP Advisory Board.
It's here.
I saw that, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, I mean, just since Commissioner Shea may not, oh, he does see it, so basically, they are really thanking the commissioners for supporting us at RSVP. They mention, since it's a new grant side, grant year cycle of twenty twenty-four, they're expressing their appreciation as they really recognize through their own experience, the values of the program. And especially because I made them aware that not every RSVP in the state or country has a reliable sponsor like you all are, as Kennedy, Commissioner. Many RSVPs have sponsors that are in smaller nonprofits, and because of the economy and COVID, some of those nonprofits have needed to let go of their RSVP program. So our volunteers are feeling especially grateful to all of you, and they have all signed electronically.
Robert, I think one of the items from the letter that's most impactful the commissioners ought to hear about is how these three points brought out in the letter show significant bounce back in productivity connections in the program, if you wanted to just highlight those very quickly, there's.
I see them, yeah. Yeah, so in the letter, we highlight that from two years ago in the midst of COVID, RSVP grew forty-four percent from a hundred twenty-five volunteers to a current one hundred eighty. You know, we had gotten involved with more remote opportunities, things like that have built back. From two years ago, our rides for veterans driver program increased by seventy percent from twenty to thirty-four active drivers, and we want to build that up to pre-pandemic, which was forty to forty-five volunteers, so we're working on that. Nine hundred sixteen medical rides were given to veterans in the past year, reflecting an average of seventy-six medical rides per month. And lastly, RSVP Elementary School, while all the volunteering is a smaller program, it is, it's a remarkable program. I'll mention the statistic that it's grown sixty-nine percent from thirteen up to twenty-two school volunteers, and we want to get it back up to thirty, but I was just at a at a little luncheon that Chris and Lee volunteer Joanne had led with the school volunteers yesterday, and it's really remarkable to hear the sharings of the ten, twelve volunteers that were there about the impact they're making in tutoring the students and how they're being called upon more to be emotional resources after COVID and to establish more personal relationships with kids. So it's a very unique and moving part of RSVP which you support. The only other news is that you have received our updated newsletter highlighting the August third luncheon. I believe we're going to have between a hundred and ten and a hundred twenty participants this year, and our plan is to keep growing back. And very lastly, as I mentioned to Commissioner Shea earlier today, one of the volunteers had an idea of establishing an RSVP calendar for the sixteen-month period beginning in September. So we're going to be having double the size of this. We're going to be having sixteen photos, I have to find a good photo of, I told Commissioner Shea of himself, as I don't have any close-ups from recent events, but you all took a great great shot last summer at our luncheon. It's going to be in the calendar, and we're going to highlight a number of RSVP events throughout.
Endicott again.
Endicott, yeah. Yeah.
And that's where it is again.
Yeah. That's my update, I'll entertain any questions if you have.
Any questions of Robert, I'm going to have the annual affair again in August third?
Yes. It is early this year.
Endicott State.
It'll be indoors.
Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir, if I could, real quick, first of all, thank you for your work, and for your volunteers, you do a great job. It's been a pleasure for you to attend in my short time, the different functions that you have, and they're always first rate, and the people are very generous in terms of giving, and that's an amazing thing, you know, of people see, and of any age, any organization, to see people motivated to give their time is a great thing. It reflects on you, and it reflects on your board. My only question I've got, since it's still new to me, and you said that RSVP is funded by the county, is there any possibilities, or why aren't there other towns that are involved in this? Like, are you limited to a certain area by your charter or your laws? I noticed a couple of towns that, well, that don't belong to it, I wonder why, what happens there? What's the reason for that?
Well, it's an interesting question, because you're talking about towns and counties.
Right.
And typically, the sponsors are government agencies, like a county or nonprofit organizations. Nonprofit organizations like an area agency on aging, like a HESCO, would cover for their RSVP program, all the cities and towns of their catchment area, just like we cover all the cities and towns for Norfolk County. So when you talk about some towns not being included, I think the key is there aren't a lot of counties that are involved with sponsoring RSVPs, a town in and of itself wouldn't sponsor an RSVP.
Okay, so my, maybe I'm just saying, I see, for example, Walpole, Sharon, Needham, Dedham, you're drawing from certain towns.
These are just our advisory board members, okay.
But all the county towns are members of RSVP, and all of them can get services.
They can.
Like Benway, Bellingham, right, Miller, so they're all able to get RSVP services.
Exactly.
Okay, I didn't realize that, okay. All right, good, that's great, that's great. Terrific.
Thank you.
That's terrific, great job, thank you.
Any other questions of Robert?
Terrific job. The August third.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Both of you.
Number six. Each week we have a public comment section, we are at that section now, Director Collins, have we got any requests for public comment?
We do not.
Okay, and Zoom land, is there anyone out there who has any public comment?
Actually, I'm going to take that back, if I could, I'll introduce the Dale Kurtz letter, appropriate?
Sure, back to, back to Director Collins.
Commissioners, some of you may remember County Veteran Service Officer Dale Kurtz, he moved on about a year ago from supporting the program through this office to directly supporting Avon over the last several months, it's a transitional time. But Dale called me about two weeks ago to announce that he's really, really retired.
Sorry, I had to get off the phone, I have to run and make a presentation. If I.
Dale, could you just mute Tony, please?
If I come, I wouldn't arrive if something happened.
Was that Robert?
Was that Tony or Robert, that might be Robert.
He was being picked up on Tony. Okay. So Mr. Kurtz has written a letter to you, I'll just read it briefly, it's addressed to all the commissioners through Commissioner Shea. As you know, I'm retiring from my work of a veteran service officer on June thirtieth, I want to express my appreciation to each of the commissioners for your support and original foresight to establish the county veteran service advocate position. As the VSA, I was able to work with Dedham Veterans Treatment Court, where I helped veterans change the direction of their lives. I stayed in contact with many of those who I met through the court. I initiated quarterly training sessions for our county veterans officers as the state provided annual training, but there was no other training provided, while guidelines and laws changed often during this time. It should be noted that the Massachusetts VSO Association in our area began quarterly meetings, which began providing training as well as opportunities to connect with fellow services. They were modeled from our training. The flexibility of the commissioners was evidenced when I asked to become the Avon Veteran Service Officer while working for the county, and then I was asked to be the service officer for Franklin. The establishment of the MOA to service both Avon and Franklin while remaining a county service officer defined a new approach to solving the issue of having an untrained, part-time service officers in our towns. This flexibility was again evident when I left Franklin and served the towns of Avon and Holbrook. I've worked with these towns to establish a viable veteran service district, which will provide full-time coverage for the towns going forward. I've enjoyed my experience as a VSO and value the experience in the highest regard. I will continue to work with the NGOs to support our veterans and their dependents with a major focus on providing support to reduce incidents of suicide. I've worked with my West Point Alumni Association to establish a veteran support team for our graduates. This team was announced in May of this year, and I'm an advisor to the team. I want to thank you, Commissioner Stady, excuse me, Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Collins, and Commissioner Stady for your support. I also thank the director and staff who have assisted me in my role respectfully, Dale Kurtz, as he heads to retirement, thought of us all, and those best wishes from him to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that something that we should be looking at in terms of getting someone in place?
I would say yes.
That's something we should.
I knew that he was still.
He was still working.
Functioning, but.
But now that he is, and we regret, because Dale is just a heck of a gentleman, outstanding person. You can't replace him, but someone in that position, we should be, if we're going to continue it, right? Having the veteran person available to help out, should we be looking at advertising or posting?
Director Collins.
So, thank you. Commissioner Stady, it is my understanding that the role that Mr. Kurtz played in Franklin and in Avon began to sunset because Franklin was moving along and getting their own full-time service officer. When he moved into Avon and Holbrook, it was transitional, he was doing so until he could train his replacement, and that has been had. From a county perspective, it is now said that there are no other needs within the county for a veteran service officer to be provided to the county communities through us any longer, they all have sufficient backup. That's not to say from time to time that some of the county communities experienced transition, the VSO role and the role model, if you will, is rather fluid. Dale mentioned that to me during his service with us, that they do encounter vacancies from time to time. I can ask Mr. Buckley to suss out if there's any interest from the various county communities in revisiting a county-based program, but Dale made it clear to me that his role was being sunset as a result of the community solving their own problems in retaining those services. We can certainly check, though, it doesn't hurt to ask, as we constantly look at ways to provide better regional services.
Follow me, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we missed, Dale was an important real part of our operation here, also a very great guy, very, very, great background. I don't think there's too many VSOs in New England, even greater than West Point grads and, you know, the background that he has, so we were very fortunate. Okay, having said that, old business I have none. Personnel matters for consideration, we have several here today, starting with the registry aides, the school commissioners' office, and then Wallaston.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we've fallen notice of promotion for Amanda Leto Polis of Waymouth as the principal clerk, replacing the Seamer Brunel, effective seven-three-twenty-three, is at the registry aides, so moved.
The rate stated, second.
Motion made, second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, next.
The Norfolk County Agricultural School, you have a new food service director. Move notice appointment of Lawrence Staples of Shrewsbury, Mass as the new food service director at the rate stated, effective seven-three-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor, aye, it is a vote.
All right, and the commissioners' office, notice of increase per fiscal twenty-four budget for William Buckley of Walpole as assistant county director at the rate stated, wait, effective this date, seven-three-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor, aye, it is a vote, next.
Notice, next motion is notice of increase fiscal twenty-four budget for John Cronin of Wallaston, Mass as county director at the rate stated, with the effective date, seven-three-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor, aye, it is a vote.
Last one, Mr. Chairman, at Wallaston, notice of the name correction for John Ardristill of Rochester as the grounds crew at the rate stated, the effective date is six-twenty-eight-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor, aye, it is a vote. Thank you, under personnel, we have
Vacation carryover.
Michelle Labadini with us. In your packet, you're going to see a list about vacation carryover, I'm going to ask Michelle to synopsize this for us, and then we'll discuss it. Michelle.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I just want to talk about vacation carryover, we're in good shape this year in accordance with the memo that the commissioners approved on March second, two thousand twenty-two, requesting a fifteen-day carryover for non-union employees. The union employees' carryover is within the bargaining units. The spreadsheet you have is in line with the non-union and union carryover caps. You'll see a report that non-union is a fifteen-day carryover, and you'll see pretty much consistency within the report on the carryover within those limits. I'm not sure if you have any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Okay, I just have a general question, this has been a long road.
It really has.
Certainly Commissioner Collins knows the most about this, because he predates me, and then Commissioner Stady has learned that we have been having an issue, and we've been trying to get our arms around it for the last five or six years that I know of, and now you feel that we're in the, going in the right direction, and we're in a program that seems to be followed in most cases, if not all, and let's hope us keep the number where it should be.
We're in good shape.
Good shape, that's a good term, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea, for the commissioner's benefit, I want to compliment Michelle in not just creating this report for your approval, but also to recognize that I think the departments who are busy every day running their show, doing what they do, require some check-in from Michelle throughout the year to inform them how various employees were doing against their accumulated time, to give them time to coach up employees to take their time before the end of June. If I'm not mistaken, you sent out one or two announcements in the second half of the year, alerting the departments of those balances, so I think we've found a working model, Commissioner Shea, that together with Michelle's assistants and her department, working with our departments, gives each county department requisite time to allow their, and to staff their schedules for the end of June to use this time before they lose it. And that's reflected, obviously, in the overwhelmingly successful way that people are now looking at their carryovers. We will be looking for the commissioners to approve the FY twenty-three carryover column as shown in the report.
I'll make that motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three vacation carryover request as recommended by the director of personnel.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Absolutely.
I'll second.
You made second.
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, I noticed through you, of course, to Michelle, it says here, there's something about the maintenance contract states that they have, if they're within a certain number of years of retirement, they can carry additional, you know, days, which is fine. So my question is, is that something that we have, or maybe you might want to look at putting in in terms of non-union personnel, is that in the personnel book or whatever?
It is not, that's, that's, that's new this year in the maintenance contract.
Okay.
It has not been discussed for non-union or other units that I know of.
Okay, thank you. All right, the other thing would be, isn't there one person that had a request for additional vacation days? Do we have to deal with that as our vote, or we we, by saying that, yes, vote, that's endorsing the column?
If you're referring to the individual whose name I'm not inclined to mention, but if the commissioners are interested in abiding by that request, we'd have to modify what is proposed.
Okay. Well, no, I'm not trying to be argumentative, Mr. Collins made a motion to adopt as presented, I seconded it. And presented, it shows a number of days to carry over.
Correct, and if I understand correctly, the employee has requested an amount of time that exceeds what is presented to you.
Oh, exceeds over that.
That is correct, so if you wish to modify your vote, or if you revisit it, that's up to you, but we are not adopting it because it would have been an exception to the rule that you adopted a year ago.
Okay. Again, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
To talk about that request, is it okay to do it?
It is, I prefer not to use the employee's name.
That's fine. So my only question was that employee, when they ask for the additional time, I couldn't figure out how you correlate, like, additional days. Like, there was a correlation at the end of your last one. They asked for, like, I think, seven or eight additional days because of demonstrated work during the pandemic, I believe. In summary, all right, talking in a general way. And I'm sympathetic, but I couldn't figure out how you get that, how do you equate that? I couldn't figure out how that, why is it seven, why isn't it a six? Or was it five, or is it, you know, I don't know how that kind of plays out. So I don't really feel comfortable taking action on that right now. I don't know if that's something we can revisit another time, or we should revisit another time, but I'd like to present it here, you know, this here. But that's why I asked about the question, if a person is going to retire, and would they have that ability to carry additional days, like, in this language here, looks pretty fair. It's a fair, it's a good thing.
As of today, would only be someone in the maintenance unit, unit contract.
Okay.
And in this spreadsheet, the max amount that someone should be able to carry over is fifteen days.
Right.
The eight additional days is included in that total where it says request to carry over additional time.
Oh, it is?
Yes, just to clarify, yeah, no. Just because I wanted to put the total amount that everyone was requesting.
That individual, if we voted as presented.
We could change that amount to fifteen days if you wanted to only have the max amount of days, because that was what the policy, that is what the policy reads, fifteen days.
Right. Okay. I was confused on that.
That's my, my, my fault, I put the days at, including the request, what the request was, but the max is fifteen days.
So to be clear, you have a motion on the table that would include providing this one individual an additional eight hours pursuant to the request made separately, you've got a copy of that letter.
Right.
Eight days.
That's correct. It exceeds the allowable amount provided by your, your policy, so if you're inclined to support it, then move forward with the motion, if you're inclined to modify it or reject it, the motion will have to be revisited.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, do HR have a position on that? Or is that appropriate?
Well.
What's your position on that letter, I couldn't, yes, I couldn't wrap my head around it.
I really think it's a, it's written, this letter is written to the commissioners, and it's really something that the commissioners need to decide on. The commissioners voted on this policy, as I stated in two thousand twenty-two. We did such a good job getting everyone down, there were many people with high balances that worked really hard in getting their balances down, and I have to give them a lot of credit. Personally, I want to let all three of you know, it was not easy for these people to get their credit, their vacation time down to fifteen days. And every year, when we do a new fiscal year, it's a lot of work on me with the carryover. This year, it's going to be nice and simple, because everyone's where they need to be. So a lot of people had very high vacation balances, it wasn't just certain people, so I just want to put that out there so you know that people worked really hard, and I, and I really do appreciate it.
Okay, okay.
What's, go ahead, Commissioner. What's the county directors' opinion?
I, I'm, I'm, of course, sympathetic to the appeal by the employee to consider additional time beyond the guideline, I happen to think it's as Commissioner Stady pointed out, it's conflating some time needed associated with pandemic and pandemic reward, if you will, pandemic pay. Under this guideline, I would reject the request simply because it falls outside the guidelines, it's, you know, you've had opportunity to expend and use your time like everybody else, this is the only one that's above the guideline, so I would reject it, I would modify the motion to bring it down to the fifteen days, which is pretty much the guideline for every other non-union individual. Perhaps if the commissioners are inclined to revisit the impact this individual had as a result of working at the department during the pandemic, they can evaluate other options or consideration. But under this one, it exceeds the guideline, so I would reject it.
I'd almost be inclined to examine other options, because I do know that you try not to make your decision personally, but I know the person worked during the pandemic on almost every day, and there were other people that did that as well, many people did that, I know that, I know that, I recognize that. And I know that we have to be careful in terms of policy and setting a precedent, but I also feel too that maybe there's some other way that we can you know, just tackle this issue, let's say.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't I just withdraw my motion? We'll go with the policy as it stands, and then we'll revisit that issue later.
I wouldn't mind that.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, you have to, you see, because of, as presented, it would be given the additional days.
Right, so I'll withdraw my motion to adopt it as presented.
So now, if you're inclined, Commissioner Collins, you would modify the report to show in this line for that particular employee, the amount to be fifteen days under FY twenty-three carryover.
All right, so, but I'll make the motion to withdraw, I need a second, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's not acted upon.
Okay, all right.
Well, yeah, just as.
I don't want to be a nitpicker here, but I think it's fifteen point five.
I think it is.
Instead of twenty. Okay.
You're right.
So it can't be fifteen point five, the maximum carryover is fifteen.
Right.
But we see.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make another motion, this time to approve the fiscal year twenty-three vacation, vacation carryover. Consistent with our policy from last year, we were able to carry over fifteen days.
Or, or as amended.
All right, or as amended.
With the understanding, as far as that motion, the individual requesting additional days, we will examine it in a later day.
In a later day.
Fair enough?
Sure.
Yes.
All right, some other way to do it.
Okay.
All right, motion made, seconded as amended and as presented, it's fifteen days. With the caveat that it best will, will take under consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, we're all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Michelle.
All right, there we go.
All right. Payroll expense warrants for approval, director.
Giant list.
Commissioner.
Oh, you know.
Giant list.
Get ready. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Money day, go ahead.
The following, there's a long list here, for the payroll of the county, twenty-three dash fifty-two, move the amount one hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars fifty-seven cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made, second in all favor, aye, it is.
Next payroll of the school, line twenty-three dash fifty-two, parentheses, twenty-six. Next, payroll of the school, line twenty-three dash fifty-two, parentheses twenty-six. The amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, forty-four cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Expense for the county, oh, six, oh, four, oh, two, three. All right, oh, two, three? Well, it's supposed to be twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Okay, okay. So, oh, two, three. The amount, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars, sixty-seven cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Expense for the school, twenty-three dash twelve feet. The amount, sixty thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars, thirty-nine cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Still going. Walls for recreational facilities, sales tax, six dash twenty-three dash twenty-three, the amount of three thousand dollars and three thousand eight dollars and eighty-two cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. The following, Mr. Chairman, are all opera awards for the following towns. First one, is the town of Cohasset, twenty-three dash fifty, the amount, two hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
To the town of Foxborough, twenty-three dash fifty, the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is approved.
To the town of Medfield, twenty-three dash fifty, the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
To the town of Norfolk, twenty-three dash fifty, opera award, the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars, sixty-three cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And we have two to the town of Westwood, both twenty-three dash fifty. The first one to Westwood is the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Make that motion first.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in Westwood, all in favor?
Aye. And the other one to the town of Westwood in twenty-three dash fifty is the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye, aye, good to see. Some newbies on there, right, kind of? Did Westwood come out?
Little bit.
Hmm? Maybe they did. But, good job. That concludes that, Mr. Chairman.
That includes payroll expense warrants in addition to opera awards. Number ten, report on American Rescue Plan after two thousand twenty-one. Director, come in.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This afternoon, you approved one point six million dollars in ARPA grants. This now brings our total to eighty million, five hundred nineteen thousand dollars. We've exceeded sixty percent of funds awarded against this program. Earlier this week, we had our quarterly ARPA meeting with our sister counties. We each report out on our activities, our challenges and our goals. I was proud to let them know that Norfolk County has only three communities left that have not had a successful grant. But within the twenty-eight cities and towns that are eligible, all have applied to some extent. So those three communities are Avon, Brookline, in, excuse me, Brookline, Plainville, and Avon have not had a successful grant yet. It doesn't mean they're not in the queue. They are. We're working on grants for them. So we're close to getting a hundred percent awards out the door, but we have a hundred percent participation in the program. So overall, Norfolk County continues to lead the way. We're doing great. We do expect Brookline, for example, to be right behind us. There's a very large award from them coming in the queue, so you'll be hearing from us very soon. Thank you.
Any discussions on that?
Unbelievable. Lot of money. That's great. Great, that's great.
Moving right along. Norfolk County Agricultural, I'm sorry, contracts, number thirteen. Nope, number twelve, bid openings, we have none. Number thirteen, contracts, we have none. Oh, we, I stand corrected. Number thirteen, contract, Norfolk County Agricultural School.
There we go.
Three contracts. Animal fish feeds and bedding is first. Nancy, come on in.
Yes, she is.
I'm not reading the agenda right. Nancy, we're at number thirteen, which is contract awards, and the first one is the fish feed and bedding.
Yes, I sent out for quotes for the animal fish feed and beddings to four vendors, three responded. It's being awarded through the responsible vendor with the lowest price for each item. Each vendor has received.
Okay, jumps around, okay.
Yes.
And it is?
I recommend award to the vendors are Sweet Metal Farm, Southridge Farm, and Ferrestine Feed and Supply.
And we've dealt with these people before?
Yes.
Okay, great. Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded on the awarding of the animal fish feed and bedding, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one, rubbish removal for a period of one year with two one-year removal options to renew at the agricultural school.
Yeah, we received three bids. JAW Waste Services was the lowest responsible bidder. It's recommended contract be awarded to them for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. They are us, somewhat of a new vendor to us. I did get good references for them. They actually have their dumpsters of facilities right now. They're being switched out because they weren't awarded a new contract. But they took over for the previous company and they've been servicing the courthouses for the past several months.
But the school will be new?
Yes.
But we had a relationship with them in the courthouse, so we know them. Okay. Questions, Commissioners, anything?
No.
Motion to approve.
Right, I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, to approve the washing and rubbish removal contract for one year with two one-year options at the agricultural school, all in favor?
Do all waste services?
JAW.
JAW, okay.
Number three is gymnasium sanding, repair and refinish. Hopefully, you get it done during the summer.
Yeah.
We need to get this out.
Yep. Quotes were sent out and it was advertised in central register to repair, refinish, and strip the gymnasium at the agricultural high school. The lowest responsible bidder was Alzolton Flooring.
Two here.
Their bid was twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. And the contract is recommended to be awarded to them with the stipulation that the work is completed by July thirty-first.
Okay. Number three, gymnasium sanding, repair and refinish.
Motion. Motion. Oh, yeah, second, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Get that out the door so we can get it done this summer.
Yeah.
This completes the awarding and contracts at the agricultural school for today.
Yeah, I separated them. Now we have, there's two all more also for the golf course.
Okay, golf course renovations.
Do a little out of order. I'd like to.
Do whatever you want. We're now in the golf course.
The first one I'd like for the the water contract for the rubbish removal, for the walls and recreational facility for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. And we had two bidders for this. And the low, lowest qualified vendor is Allstate Waste. They have serviced us several times over the years in the county. And we've never had a problem with them.
Second motion.
What's this for again?
It's for rubbish removal.
Oh, okay.
At golf course.
At golf course.
Okay.
It's a one year with a two-year.
I'll put some renovations or something. Yeah, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
It includes the rubbish removal with the golf course.
Next. And next will be the grounds renovations at the walls for recreational facility. I just prepared a spreadsheet. These are the bids that will open this morning. And I just wanted to give you. And these are the results of the three bids we received this morning. The lowest being DHT Golf Services. And it's recommended to award a contract to DHT in the amount of sixty, sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars base bid. And including add alternate one in the amount of sixty-four seventy, sorry, six thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. And add out number two for forty, four thousand two hundred and ten dollars for a total bid price of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars for golf course grounds renovations for the walls to recreational facility. And this falls within the budgeted amount.
And this is the continuing improvement.
Every year, yes.
That they bring up every year.
Yes. And DHT is one of the vendors. We used to have, Paudish and DHT are the two that award contracts.
So they have worked for it before?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I move the contract with DHT Golf, the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars?
Seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion made and seconded to award the golf course renovation project for DHT Golf Services, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Does that conclude us, Nancy?
Yes, we're all set.
Thank you.
Great.
We've got to get a couple of these going because it's summer work, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Moving right along. Number fourteen, approval for the staff to use Commissioner's stamp to approve certain invoices to be paid on seven, five, two, oh, two, three. This will allow over the holiday weekend if necessary to do stamp.
Yeah, move authorization for the users' stamp for that period as indicated.
Right. Motion made and seconded to use otherwise use of Commissioner's stamps to approve certain invoices to be paid.
And warrants.
On one, seven, five, twenty-three?
Yeah.
Year end?
And warrants.
And warrants.
And warrants, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. In unanimous. Number fifteen, extension of existing spending freeze through September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Director, come in.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Last week, the financial team met to monitor our year-end close position. While it appears as though the county will be fine to close FY twenty-three with revenues meeting expenditures, we're still mindful that the projected revenues for FY twenty-four are built upon some economic conditions that right now are not showing favorability to continue into FY twenty-four. Namely, some of the registry deeds activities and the transaction fees. So until such time as those revenues begin to turn and display activities that could be projected to meet our revenue targets next year, we're recommending that the county carry its spending freeze one quarter, three months into the beginning of FY twenty-four. Out of an abundance of caution, the commissioners may recall that this spending freeze is for discretionary spending, does not apply to the schools. It is not a spending freeze, but yet it does ask departments to tighten the belt and to look at deferring any spending within their approved budgets, in this case, for the first three months of fiscal year twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Is this really necessary, you felt?
Yeah, again, we are, if we take the last couple or maybe the last quarter of revenue collections into account, we extrapolate them over the next twelve months, we might find ourselves tightening again to revenue projections. A spending freeze is an attempt to slow down any spending against our appropriation so that we don't exceed our spending against revenue projections.
Okay, Peter made a motion. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will extend the spending freeze to September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
You've already taken a vote on number?
Number fourteen, number sixteen.
Yeah, I've taken a vote.
Is the vacation policy previously voted?
Yep.
Thank you. Report of the County Director, number seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Just a few items. Last week, Norfolk County celebrated its three hundred and thirtieth anniversary, so happy birthday to us.
Wow.
Check your, oh, date there. Quincy District Court, the contract for services beginning July first is all set. I'm happy to explain in detail to any individual commissioners how it looks, but essentially, as the Commonwealth is purchasing the building, they also simultaneously through the trial courts want us to maintain it. So we're going to pretty much carry on the same level of service that we've been providing throughout FY twenty-four. In this case, however, because we are no longer the owner, Commonwealth's going to be paying us monthly during the period of FY twenty-four for these services. I worked out a budget and a attachment of services which I've shared with our facilities maintenance department so that they understand our guidelines. But the only big change is that Commonwealth now absorbs the ownership and capital risk and responsibilities of the facility. They will also be paying all the utilities directly. So I'm happy to tell you that that piece is done. And in addition to that, under number nineteen of your agenda this afternoon, I'm going to ask for some action on some quick claim deed activity that Scott Lopez is working on to wrap up the close of this property on July seventh. So Quincy's shaping up to be a smooth sailing closing, and I just want to let, alert the commissioners that we're in good shape to maintain it effective July tenth as well. Happy to go through the details if you want it, but they're pretty straightforward in what we've been doing to date. I also want to let you know that I received an email.
Wait, can we stop on that one?
Oh, sure.
Any question?
Commissioner State.
So just, I read the thing pretty carefully, but may I miss something? Did that also include plumbing services? I didn't see it mentioned. Electrical and cleaning?
Everything.
So plumbing, it didn't specify it, though. I didn't see it called on.
I believe I referred it was a roving trades worker.
Okay, okay.
It's the same.
It wasn't broken out. It was electrical, but I didn't see plumbing, so that's inherent.
It's, yeah, it is inherent. It's the same level of commitment that we give under our regular lease agreement.
Okay.
Nothing's changed there.
That's cool.
Yeah, they wanted to give the same blend.
All right, second thing, since Quincy's going off the book, Mr. Chairman, are we going to see a concurrent decrease then in terms of utilities? In terms of heat, electricity on our books, because that will be not needing to be budgeted, right? Could there be a decrease in our budget?
It's already budgeted, but we will see a savings in FY twenty-four. That's what you mean.
Right, we're not paying it the like.
Okay, all right. That was it?
Right, and hopefully, we go through it and then we'll adjust next year.
Right, okay.
The money would come back to the general fund anyway. I mean, we always keep our fingers crossed and John keeps his fingers crossed and he reminds us when we're into hot weather. They do have an issue there, but last year we knock on wood, escaped, so hopefully we'll escape this year. I mean, they are prepared to bring in outside. I think they're bringing generators and they feed cool air into the, into this whole system just to help when it breaks down or slows down.
I definitely had that. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Same maintenance, I assume, same staff, so. That also gives us a chance to broaden our outlook on as far as manpower goes in the future.
Right.
Maybe if someone will retire at the top of the list, we probably would replace him and take someone from Quincy and move him around or whatever. We'll cross that bridge when it comes. It's all you and your contract. So. Any other questions about?
No, that was great, Joe.
Yeah, Scott's done a great job too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't want to use the word pleasantly surprised, but I mean, that went for something that was lingering around four or five years, all of a sudden bums.
Yeah.
It's like it's here.
Yeah.
Welcome again. Okay. Congratulations to everyone.
The next item, I received word from the Attorney General's Office again that we are in line for additional opioid grant funds through the Jansen slash Johnson and Johnson settlement. The commissioners may recall, over the last year or so, we've received two separate awards, one for about four thousand dollars and another one for about sixteen thousand from this settlement. Those funds have been used in large part to award opioid grants to the various Norfolk County Coalition members through the District Attorney's Office. This, this particular notice informs us that between the July two thousand twenty-four period, so this is a year from now, and all the way to July two thousand thirty-eight, the county can expect anywhere between five, fifty-four hundred and six thousand, four hundred dollars a year for a total of eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars over that period of time. So we'll have time between now and next year when we receive our first or next settlement monies coming in on how to distribute it, but I reason to think that the commission is ought to consider the partnership of the District Attorney as a proof of wanting to get money where it belongs in the hands of individuals working on the opioid addiction problem directly. So, good news, more money will be coming. You won't see that payment at least for another year and then for the next fourteen after that. I did apply for a grant associated with the Walmart settlement. This was a separate settlement agreement. I applied for that in April and have not heard from the AG's office. I'll follow up with them to see if Norfolk County is in line for receipt of those. Um, I'll follow up with them to see if Norfolk County is in line for receipt of those funds as well. It's a very bureaucratic process, so it's, um, compass, I'm trying to get answers, but that's your update on the opioid piece.
So the total's eighty-three thousand, but it's spread out over fifteen years. They did, okay, so the amount each year is like five thousand.
On average.
On the average, so trying to figure out, if it was eighty-three up front, it'd be great. It'd be great, but, you know, but it's all right. You're suggesting we keep working with the D A and that group?
You'll have a year to think about it, but it made, it makes sense that.
So far, so good. We have, yeah, if the apparatus is set up.
Yeah, it's going well. I don't know, it's going well.
We still can, every year we revote it. I, I think we'd rather do it that way. That way you still have control, but.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to use the word sound money, but.
Right.
You know, first, first batch went to all rear-end bell police. Now they're, they're going to go through the consortium of, of groups under the D A. They already, as I said, they've got everything set up. It's, it's just a transfer, but we still maintain the right to check it every year.
Just in case, right, okay. That's fine, thank you.
And, and just to complement that, in addition to this funding, we're hoping that the Walmart settlement will compliment that if we're.
Oh, okay.
Qualified.
I, I catch you off the.
It'll be above, beyond.
Walmart might have some additional money too?
Yeah, we applied.
Is it a grant or is that?
It would be the same thing.
A settlement or a settlement, oh.
It's all part of the same class action. They handle them differently.
Okay.
This is called the Jansen slash Johnson and Johnson settlement.
Right.
Um, but the one that is out there involves Allergan, Walmart, and Walgreens, I think, as well as a couple of other major distributors, um, for settled. So it's a separate process. So, mourn that later, and we'll find out if we qualify. Thank you very much.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, Director Cronin?
What happened, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, come get an ink, the next week we're having a meeting. What happened to the Alzheimer, uh, project that we were funding?
Oh, right, so, um, I've had follow-up conversations with, um, their home office, I think they're in Ohio. Um, they have, um, modified their plan. It's now around a hundred-ish thousand dollars to provide a promotional campaign, um, in partnership with the Norfolk County Commissioners to promote their, um, annual walk fundraiser in Foxborough. Um, it's a multi-county initiative. It's going to involve broadcast of messaging across uh, the communities here in, in Norfolk County to advance the need to, uh, raise funds for that, for that cause. Um, I plan to, um, put together an ARPA application um, and have it tested by Clifton Morrison to make sure, well, I'll put it in for approval, and then it'll come before you for ultimate approval, but it would be approximately a hundred thousand dollars. If you're inclined to see that, that's my next step on that.
Thank you.
Alright, yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Number eighteen, emergency items or topics that the Chair did not reasonably anticipate. I believe we have one relative Quincy Court.
Yes, sir. Um, Scott Lopez, uh, notified as he's, as he is busy, uh, completing the records and paperwork for closing, um, on Quincy District Court. You've had a purchase and sale agreement you've agreed to. He's working on a quick claim right now, and this afternoon, he just needs your signatures on an item. We unfortunately don't have time to post for, but it's performed, it is mysterious in nature. Uh, it's a vote of the Commissioners of Norfolk County, uh, to authorize Chairman Shea on behalf of the County of Norfolk to execute a quick claim deed conveying the District Court of East Norfolk to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It also authorizes Chief Chairman Shea on behalf of the County of Norfolk to execute the settlement statement detailing the transaction and to finally adopt, ratify, and confirm all actions here, too, taken by the Commissioners in connection with the matter is subject of a foregoing vote. So your, this afternoon, we just simply need your, um, vote to allow these three items to be, um, conveyed, authority to Commissioner Shea. He'll sign these and get the quick claim deed over to Scott. I just need your figure after vote on these two originals.
I'll make, I'll make those motions.
Yeah, it's fine. I'll second each one. It's fine. Necessary.
It's two separate votes.
It's one vote.
One vote.
You can.
Motion made and seconded.
To allow the Chair to sign.
Vote to authorize Chairman Shea to sign on behalf of the county.
Right.
Honor before July seventh, twenty-twenty-three, a quick claim deed relative to the sale of the Francis Explodent District Court House in Quincy. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
To rise again.
If you wouldn't mind, sir. Uh, signature required on.
Yes, sir.
Please.
Anything else? Um, I want to mention this is our last meeting in the fiscal year.
Yes.
Uh, twenty, fiscal twenty-twenty-four will be starting in a few days.
And before you adjourn, because you won't be wanting to vote to recess, just in event there's any unexpected.
So we're not going to adjourn today. We're going to take a vote to recess should we have to come in design.
Right.
Or do anything relative to the end of the year. As of now, we're in good shape. But, uh.
We do expect to see you virtually on July tenth, Monday.
Say again, sir?
We do expect to see you virtually on July tenth.
Relative to. The, that's what. That's with the advisory board, correct?
Must be a blue ocean behind me, but you'll see.
And then the twelfth is a regularly fully scheduled meeting at the address. Okay, any other questions relative to the end of the year or anything at all?
Just want to wish everybody a happy fourth, and, uh, looking forward to the new fiscal twenty-four, like a do-over, right? New year?
Yes.
Right, getting on it? It's always fun.
You know, we're going to do a remote meeting, so should we do that at Richard's house down the cake?
Oh, come on down.
The tenth, yeah.
Come on down.
I've heard the reception's a little sketchy.
It is sketchy. It really, it, it's just the kind of place where I am. He moves it left or right, call gets dropped, so it might be. Shit, I might just.
I have tremendous trouble, my.
It's horrible.
My mashbeat, too.
It's good, though. It's good and it's bad, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes you need to be away, sometimes, you know?
It doesn't bother me. It used to bother my wife. It doesn't bother her anymore either.
I would say, they said COVID changed everything in terms of even like when accessibility, people that will call you on a Sunday, it used to be a little different, but, you know. Taylor V.
Are you in an ARPA grant for satellite connection?
Ah, maybe.
Norfolk County's satellite connection, Commissioners.
So we're done with it.
I think I better make a motion.
Take a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
We can travel. A motion to recess at two twenty-seven?
Sure.
Motion to recess, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright.
Happy Fourth of July to everyone.